I would like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting for Saturday, November 7th, 2020, to order. I will begin with the following statement. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record the meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. At this time, may I please ask that if there is anyone who is recording this meeting to please identify yourself either by using the raised hand function, or if you are calling in to please unmute and identify yourself for the record, please? Hello, may I help you? Trial? Is there anyone who is recording the meeting? Okay, at this time, I would ask if any of my colleagues on other boards or committees need to call their boards to order. At this point, I think I'll start with the Public Safety Building Committee. Bob Garrity, I think you're on. Are you going to be calling to order? I believe you have a quorum present. Bob, I think you're muted.
How about now?
Coming in loud and clear.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll call my Public Safety Building Committee meeting to order. And let's have the head count. It's Paul Haley here. How about Joe Kelly?
Both Paul and Joe are present. I think they're both muted, Bob.
Okay, um, okay, good. Tally Vada? I think he's present, pretty sure.
Yes.
Bruce Nacoloni? I think Bruce may not have been able to attend, but I'm not sure. Donna Smaller, I can see Donna?
Here.
And Andy Touche?
I believe Andy is here.
Here.
Yeah, and I'm here. So we have a quorum.
Okay, and Mr. Kelly is also there representing the building committee. Thank you. Bob Curley, will you be calling the advisory committee to order?
Mary, I don't believe we will because I don't believe we have a quorum at this time. And if we get a quorum later, I'd be reluctant to interrupt the presentation. So maybe at the end of the presentation, or at any convenient time, if we get a quorum, I'll call the AdCom into order at that point in time.
Okay, thank you. I'm just looking at the attendees, and I don't believe there are any other committees to be called to order. So with that, I would like to welcome everybody, and thank you for joining us this afternoon. The purpose of today's meeting is really to share information and to provide a forum to answer questions with respect to the single warrant article that is going to be the subject of a special town meeting two weeks from today, which is Saturday, November 22nd, at 12 o'clock PM at the Hingham High School Multipurpose Field.
Excuse me, Mary?
Yes, Joe?
That's November 21st.
November 21st. I beg your pardon. Did I say something different?
You said the 22nd.
Okay. And you know what? I think I was looking at the rain date on my warrant. But many of us may have gotten this in the mail yesterday. If not, we'll probably get it today, which is the warrant that contains all of the information about the meeting. In terms of our process for today, in a moment, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Joe Fisher, who will really lead us in a presentation that really kind of lays out all the important issues with respect to the special town meeting. And we're joined today, and we are so grateful for all of the town employees and our fellow volunteers who are here today to share their knowledge, their expertise, to summarize the work that they've done. And Joe, I'll count on you to introduce people as you go along. We anticipate that the presentation will last approximately 45 minutes, and at that point, we will open it up to questions from the public. So as you're listening to the presentation, to the extent that people do have questions, we'd ask you to please hold those until the conclusion of the presentation. Just before handing it over to my colleague, Joe, there's a lot of information that's contained in your warrant. You're going to get a lot of great information today. From my perspective, there are really three things that I hope everybody takes away from today's presentation. The first one is that the town has an option to purchase some land, and that option expires at the end of November. Some people are asking why we need to have a special town meeting at this time, mindful that we are in the midst of a pandemic, and that is because the purchase of this land is time-sensitive. The second thing that I hope people will take away from this afternoon is an understanding that purchasing this land puts our town on the path to address three important issues: space and facility issues at our North Fire Station, space issues with respect to our senior center, and space issues with respect to our police station. So this land purchase will help us solve three important issues and priorities for the town. And the third thing that I hope everybody takes away from today, again, through watching the presentation, is that this warrant article, and the passage of this warrant article, and the purchase of this land, in no way affects the town's ability to move forward on foster school, nor does it have any impact on operating budgets for the town of Hingham, which includes the school department. You're going to hear a whole lot more about these different things, but I thought that might be kind of a helpful way to set the table. With that, I would like to turn it over to my colleague, Joe Fisher. Joe is the Board of Selectmen liaison to public safety, and as such, has been the member of our board who's been working very closely with Tom and Michelle, with the department heads, with the building committee on this important thing. Before I do that, Joe, I do see that there is a hand raised, and the only... I'm recording. Please self at this team of Mike, asking to be recognized. And Mike, if you are notifying us of recording, I will recognize you. If not, I would ask you to hold your question until after the presentation. Okay, and I see a hand raised by... Okay.
Mary, ignore those hands.
Okay.
Sorry, Mary. I'm trying to remove a few folks who are clearly not here for the info session.
Not a problem, not a problem. Okay, with that, Joe Fisher, I will turn it over to you to walk all of us through what is really just a tremendous body of work with respect to the special town meeting.
Thank you, Mary. I really appreciate you setting the table for this, and really thanks to everyone who is here. It is a spectacular, beautiful day, and the fact that you're taking the time really to focus on an important issue for the town speaks well of the town, as well as speaks well of those people on this call. So for this call, we have a slide presentation that Michelle can put up on the screen so that everyone can see what we're doing. And I'm going to have you lead this first slide, which really just talks about the... It's the introduction. And like Mary, I'm going to cover some points. Before we even get to the slide, I'm going to give you some information that sort of encapsulates what you're going to hear, where we're going. What you're going to hear is that we're looking to purchase a property at 335 Lincoln Street. The cost to acquire the property, you'll see later, is $5,525,000. And you're going to hear of four specific benefits that will flow from the property, from that property acquisition. First, it will give the town the ability to plan and design for a new fire station to replace the existing North Fire Station at 230 North Street, which is in desperate need of being replaced. Second, you'll hear not only can we replace the fire station, but we can do so at this location that provides an optimal location for the town in terms of responding timely to the call volumes that are expected for the foreseeable future for the fire department. Third, you're going to hear that purchasing this property gives the town the opportunity to achieve cost savings by simultaneously replacing our outdated police headquarters with a modern facility that would be co-located with the fire station at 335 Lincoln Street. And fourth, and finally, you'll hear that by allowing us to move the police headquarters from its current location at Town Hall, it will free up space to allow for the expansion of the senior center, which is currently dramatically undersized and needs major renovations in order properly to serve our senior community. So with that, Mary, Michelle, if you can move to the second slide. So specifically, there's a town meeting, November 21st, Saturday, at noon, and there is one item on the agenda: whether we want to purchase the property located 335 Lincoln Street for a to-be-designed new public safety facility combining North Fire Station and police headquarters. You'll see the cost, including closing cost, is $5.525 million, and our ability to move forward with this acquisition at this location at this price requires that we notify the seller by no later than November 30th of this month. So that's the timing. Michelle, if you can move to the next slide, which is going to address specifically the concerns for the fire department, and I would like to introduce Steve Murphy, the chief of the Hingham Fire Department, to lead us at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Today, we are discussing the North Fire Station, also known as Torrent or Station 2, which is located at 230 North Street. Slide. As you can see from this slide, the town has three fire stations, which are geographically located throughout: one in North Hingham, one in South, and Fire Headquarters, which is located in Hingham Center. The history of the North Fire Station is that the building was built in 1941 by Edgar Walker, a local architect who still has family in the community. The station has served the town very well for almost 80 years, but unfortunately, during that time, it has only had minimal upgrades. Specifically, it was renovated in 2001 with modifications to the living quarters, which includes the kitchen, sleeping quarters, and bathrooms. Truthfully, though, the renovations were more cosmetic and did not include major structural upgrades, so most of the building, including the utilities, are original. In 2013, the Board of Selectmen recognized that the station needed an upgrade, so they created a Fire Department Assets Review Committee, which looked at both the North and South Fire Stations. This committee eventually led to the formation of the North Fire Station Building Committee in 2015. This new committee was charged with conducting a feasibility study to see if it was possible to renovate the current building. Unfortunately, they found that renovation was not possible due to certain site and building restrictions, ultimately leading to their recommendation that the town find a new location for a fire station to serve the north part of town. Work continued over the next few years to identify a new location, and a few properties were pursued, unfortunately, without success. In early 2020, the property at 335 Lincoln Street was identified as a possibility. The 2020 annual town meeting authorized the creation of a Public Safety Building Committee and funded a feasibility study. Slide. There are a few different things that factor into the proper location for a fire station. Unlike the police department, where the cruisers are out on patrol, we respond from the station. This requires that fire stations are usually strategically located to allow the crews to respond to incidents within their district in less than four minutes. Obviously, traffic and driving conditions can impact that, so we also want to make sure that the station is located on major routes and not in residential neighborhoods. We also want the building to have easy access to lights and other things that will help shorten our response. The final and crucial consideration is that we want to locate the station close to where most of our calls are, both current and based on anticipated population growth. It is safe to say that the town of Hingham has grown in the 80 years since North Fire Station was built, so what once may have been the correct location may no longer be. For example, there's been more development in certain areas, including Route 3A and the shipyard. All of these factors have led us to choose the current property, which meets all of our location considerations. Slide. Another factor that the 2015 North Fire Station Building Committee considered is the commuter train. They wanted to make sure that any new location was in the same side of the tracks as the current station, thus allowing us to continue to serve North Hingham. The committee's recommendation to seek an alternate location was based on a number of reasons. They can be summarized into three categories: size and site restrictions, safety, and age. From a size perspective, there have been many changes in the fire service over the last 80 years. First, the size of the vehicles have grown much larger in all dimensions: length, height, and weight. Unfortunately, this limits what can operate out of the current North Fire Station. Specifically, our ladder truck, also known as the Quint, which is the only fire truck we have that can reach the taller buildings in the shipyard, physically can't fit in the building. In addition, the property itself is too small for the length of larger, modern fire apparatus. This becomes a safety concern, and is evident every time the trucks exit the building because the front apparatus ramp is too small. We see this on a daily basis every time the crews perform a vehicle truck check, which requires pulling the truck out under the front ramp. When the crews do this, the fire engine actually blocks the sidewalk. The committee realized that even if we could pick up the building and move it further back, it still wouldn't fix the problem. The lot is physically too small. Another site problem that helped reach the recommendation to relocate is because North Fire Station is built over the town borough. The building is supported by pylons with a structural floor. The 2015 feasibility study found that the only way to bring the building up to meet current seismic codes was to demolish the building and start from scratch. The committee therefore recognized that it did not make sense to tear down the building and rebuild on a piece of property that was too small. Beyond the size restrictions, there have been many other changes in the fire service that impact our ability to serve the community since the North Fire Station was built. One of the biggest is the changes in our mission itself. Back in the 1940s, the fire department was not involved in emergency medical services, also known as EMS, which accounts for between 60% to 70% of our calls for services. As such, North Fire Station does not have adequate storage for medical equipment or a separate triage room to properly treat walk-in medicals. There have been other mission changes as well, such as responding to hazardous materials incidents, water rescues, and others that require us to store vehicles and equipment in a building that it was never designed for. Another example of design changes is that female firefighters didn't exist when the station was built. Therefore, it does not have the proper layout of living spaces, such as adequate individual sleeping quarters, bathrooms, et cetera. The final size considerations are lack of space for both training or a proper fitness area. Studies have shown that cardiac disorder is the leading cause of firefighter fatalities. We need a space for the firefighters to exercise while they are on duty. Yes, we have a fitness room at Fire Headquarters, but allowing crews to go to that station while on duty would defeat the purpose of responding from the satellite stations and not allow us to meet the four-minute response time. The second main category why the current building is no longer suitable is safety. Over the last 10 to 15 years, there's been a focus on cancer in the fire service. Sadly, this has become the second leading cause of death for firefighters. This threat is a direct result of the carcinogens and other chemicals that the firefighters are exposed to. Whenever they come into contact with smoke and other products of combustion, the carcinogens get absorbed into their fire gear, uniforms, and even through their skin. We need to be able to properly decontaminate and clean both the firefighters and their equipment as quickly as we can to decrease their risk. We cannot properly do this at our current station. To help protect from the cancer risk, many modern fire stations are designed with different zones: hot, warm, and cold. The idea is that the hot zone is where the contaminants exist, and the cold zone is a safe area, such as the living spaces. The warm zone is the section in between. Unfortunately, North Fire Station doesn't allow for this. In reality, the building has two cold zones that are separated by the apparatus floor, which is a hot zone. So when the firefighters are working, they have to walk between the two to go from the kitchen and eating area to the living quarters, which includes the bathrooms. The final concern with North Station is the age. As I have mentioned, the building has only had minimal upgrades over the years. As you can see from this picture, the boiler is original, it is the original plumbing, most of the original electricity, and unfortunately, lacks certain safety features, such as the sprinkler system. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Murphy. What I heard in summary is that for the safety of our town and the health of our firefighters, we need to move the current North Fire Station to a new location. The town has considered different locations and determined that our best option is to relocate the North Fire Station to the property at 335 Lincoln Street. Our vision is to combine the North Fire Station with a new headquarters for our police department. The police headquarters is not adequate and needs substantial work. We can achieve construction efficiencies and operational efficiencies by co-locating police and fire together at 335 Lincoln Street. I'd like to introduce Chief Dave Jones of the Hingham Police Department to proceed with the next couple slides.
Great, thank you, Joe. I'd like to start with a brief history of how the police department came to be located at the Town Hall complex. In 1967, an addition was added to the then high school, which is now the Town Hall. This addition is the current space that the police department and senior center occupy. In 1998, the Hingham Police Department moved to Central Street. We immediately came to the realization that we were out of space and ran out of places to put items being moved into our new location. In 2011, the Regional Emergency Communication Center was created and took away 1,500 square feet from the police department. The entire records division, public lobby for records, traffic sergeant's office, and storage space were lost. In 2015, a study committee was formed to look at the needs of the departments that are located at Town Hall, including the police department. This involved tours of other police stations, including joint police and fire facilities. In 2020, an opportunity arose to purchase 335 Lincoln Street, a property that could house a combined police headquarters and fire substation facility. Our current facility was never designed to be a police station. As I mentioned previously, it was originally built as an addition on a school, and the police department was fit into what space was left. After moving in, we were immediately lost areas that were designated for other functions to storage. For example, we lost pre-booking detainee holding areas, which are now used for storage of two police motorcycles, tires, cruiser maintenance supplies, and other equipment. When we moved from Lincoln Street to our current facility, we were downsized by two male cells, one female cell, and three full-size garage bays, going from four bays to only one. There is no available storage anywhere in our current facility, and we are forced to store equipment and supplies in jail cells, under tables, under stairs, and in hallways. In fact, there is only one small storage closet outside of the booking area for general storage, and we are forced to use storage in the attic of Town Hall. In our current facility, the roll call room serves six functions. It's the roll call room where we hold shift briefings three times a day for each shift, and they're between nine to 20 staff members working, depending on the shift. It serves as a training room, which is undersized for this use, as there are only 24 available seats at full capacity. In order to host most trainings, a minimum of 30 seats is required, along with available parking, which we do not have. It serves as a community room that we use for our Citizens Police Academy, Boy and Girl Scout events, and other community outreach meetings. It serves as a conference room where we hold staff meetings or other departmental meetings. It is the only space that we can use as an interview room outside of the secure detainee booking area, and it also serves as the officer's lunch and break room. And it can't be used for this when any of the above functions are happening. So the officers are forced to take meal breaks in their cruisers or any other location they can find. The formation of the Regional Dispatch Center necessitated our entire records division with a public lobby and storage to be squeezed into the only comments room that was at the station, and eliminated any public-facing window or lobby for community members looking for a copy of a police report, an accident report, or to come meet with a detective or any member of the administrative staff. The only way the public can now access records is through a mail slot in a door of a stairwell, and the wreckage clerk needs to stand within two feet of high-use restrooms when interacting with the public through that mail slot. There is no privacy in this area for exchange of sensitive personal information in the stairwell. Our armory is grossly undersized, and we have no room for storage or training equipment and cleaning supplies. There is no area for officers to clean their weapons, and there is no plumbing or ventilation, and strong solvents are used for cleaning the small room. Our locker rooms are grossly undersized. Both male and female locker rooms are maxed out, and personal items have to be stored on top of the lockers, on and under benches, and on any available floor space. Radios, batteries, and flashlights have to be charged on sink countertops. In the male locker room, lockers had to be installed in the shower room and in a hallway, restricting movement and not allowing people to move past each other. The lockers that are installed are high school-style lockers that are not designed for public safety. They are narrow and do not allow air movement between garments that are hung up inside, such as wet rain jackets or body armor that has been saturated by sweat. The current standard for public safety lockers have built-in electrical outlets for charging equipment, as well as ventilation. We have significant parking challenges at our facility. There are only 21 parking spaces, and we currently have 22 police vehicles, meaning that there are no available parking spaces for staff when these spots are occupied, forcing vehicles to park in a narrow alleyway and reducing that to a one-lane travelway. Emergency vehicle traffic is often delayed due to other vehicles entering or leaving. There are no parking spaces for our radar speed trailers or message signboards. An ambulance cannot fit into our current garage space, creating a serious safety issue for any detainees and the officers due to them having to bring prisoners outside of the secure area of the garage. The garage bay is also used for storage out of necessity. There should be no items stored at all in this area for obvious safety reasons. We cannot bring multiple prisoners into this area due to only one cruiser being able to occupy it at a time, and we are prohibited from doing any maintenance or repairs to our cruisers and any equipment when the garage is being used due to arrests. Fire department apparatus cannot access the rear of our station due to the overcrowded parking and vehicles parked in the alleyway. We simply have no available office space, and many people are forced into sharing already cramped spaces. The office you see in the bottom left is shared by five people: our two firearms licensing officers, our animal control officer, our domestic violence advocate, our police mental health clinician, and it also serves as the only private space for our officers and detectives to use. And this can only happen if none of the other individuals are working. In our detective division, four detectives are forced to share a small room. There is no area for them to privately meet with victims or witnesses of a serious crime, or for them to hold meetings or briefings with other agencies. Other offices that were designed for one person have been doubled up out of necessity. Our lobby area, which is the only public area... Our lobby area, which is the only public area in the station, is vastly undersized. There are no private areas for the members of our community to privately speak with officers. So you could have a victim of a crime, such as identity fraud, speaking with an officer and providing necessary information such as their name, address, date of birth, social security number, and phone numbers with an earshot of anybody else who happens to be in the lobby. We frequently have multiple sets of people in the lobby at any time who are looking for information or directions or dropping off unwanted medications in our drop box or to file a police report. Often, a victim of a serious crime such as a sexual assault or domestic violence incident are forced to speak with officers in this public lobby. The space is also the only entrance and exit to the police facility for the public. So this is the same area that bail prisoners are being uh bail prisoners are exiting from, right into the same space where a victim or a witness of a crime could come face-to-face with the person arrested in the same case that they are involved in. In closing, I want to thank everyone for taking the time out of your days to be part of this important project. The men and women of the Hingham Police Department continue to work to provide the best possible service despite the significant challenges our space presents. Thank you.
Chief Jones, thank you. Uh it's clear that there are strong and compelling needs to expand and relocate the police headquarters. There's inadequate space, there's safety issues, health concerns, and parking challenges. It makes sense to address those issues now at the same time that we adjust the challenges of North Fire Station by co-locating the police headquarters with North Fire Station at three thirty-five Lincoln Street. That move would not only achieve benefits for police and fire services, it will also free up space that we can use to expand the senior center to a size that will better better serve our senior residents. And I'd like to introduce Dawn Silver, uh the Chair of the Council on Aging and Jennifer Young, the Director of our Elder Services Department, uh who will explain why there are compelling needs to expand the senior center and to provide for additional parking for our seniors. And I'd like to start by introducing Dawn.
Thank you, Joe. As Joe mentioned, I am the Chair of the Hingham Council on Aging, Dawn Silver, and a thirty-eight-year resident of Hingham. I've been Chair for the past three years and will end my eight-year term on the council in June. And one of the things that I can tell you that I have learned over the eight years is we truly have a phenomenal Department of Elder Services Senior Center in Hingham, and we are truly very lucky. Um it is one of our best resources, the senior center. We have an incredible senior center staff and a hundred and thirty or more volunteers who work every day for and with the seniors and their families in our town. The building, however, which houses the senior center, as you will hear from our Director Jennifer in a minute, is inadequate and does not meet the needs of the fastest-growing population in Hingham, our seniors, and I am one. The Executive Office of Elder Affairs recommends four to five feet per senior for a senior center. And if you are, if we use census data from two thousand eighteen and the four-foot number and remove Linden Pond residents who do use the center, but they have facilities, so I will move them from my calculation. We should have almost a twenty-four thousand foot facility for our seniors. We currently have five thousand. I've had the opportunity to work with other senior centers in the work I do for work, and while we have really an outstanding staff, our facility is woefully inadequate and just doesn't meet the needs. The seniors of Hingham, as I said, of which I am one, are truly valuable and important resources to our community, and they and we deserve a space that reflects that value. So I'd like to now turn uh the presentation over to Jennifer Young, who is our Director of Elder Services, who will walk you through some of the the barriers in our senior center right now and some of the things we need. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Uh thank you, Joe. Uh I am Jennifer Young, I'm the Director of Hingham Elder Services and the Hingham Senior Center. Uh for those of you that have not been to the senior center or don't really know what we do, we are nationally accredited and we keep Hingham residents over the age of sixty connected and engaged in healthy aging. We do a lot of really great things in an itty-bitty space, but we are very limited and have obvious deficiencies. So the Council on Aging was established fifty years ago in nineteen seventy, and we're very proud of that, celebrating our anniversary this year. Um from nineteen seventy-two to nineteen seventy-six, the Council on Aging operated out of the Hingham Community Center.
Excuse me, Jennifer?
Yes.
You you are, at least for me, your volume is fading in and out. I don't know those investment you can make.
Not sure. I don't know if this is better?
Yes.
Okay. Um I'm sorry for that. So in nineteen seventy-six, the Council on Aging established a fifteen-hundred-square-foot senior center inside of the Hershey House, where it remained for twenty-two years. In nineteen ninety-eight, the senior center was moved to its current location on Central Street, adjacent to the police station and Town Hall. So the current facility is twenty-two years old, and it has served our seniors well, but the needs and interests of older adults have changed. And as Dawn mentioned, the population is growing and it will continue to grow. If you could change the slide, thank you. Uh the current space in Town Hall is approximately five thousand square feet, which is seriously undersized to serve the current senior population of just over seven thousand residents over the ages sixty. That's thirty-one percent of the population. Over the next ten years, that number is going to continue to grow to forty percent of the population, near ten thousand residents. We actually serve more than just the seniors. We provide support and education to caregivers and family members as well. And the population over the age of fifty uh is eleven thousand four hundred, which is close to fifty percent of the population. And if you think about it, even younger adults, you know, ages thirty, forty, are taking care of their older adult parents. Um so we do serve a very huge percentage of the population. Last year, we saw over nine hundred seniors, but we could do much, much more. The seniors and caregivers that come into the center aren't coming in for an errand and leaving. They stay with us. They hang out with their friends, they have lunch, um and some of them are with us, you know, from eight to four. So given those numbers, it's no surprise that we have inadequate program space. And after my discussion, you'll see a couple of pictures of the inside of the center. So we have three to four programs, uh uh program rooms, rather. And that's if we use a large partition to divide one of the spaces. Our instructors and volunteers compete for the appropriate rooms to meet the needs of their programs. And we have to place very strict limits on the attendance. Also, we've had to send some of our programs over to Town Hall meeting rooms, which can be very disruptive to town offices and difficult for seniors with mobility issues. It's a long walk with inclines and two elevators to get from the center up to those meeting rooms. Modern centers have at least one lecture room. They have a health room, art rooms, um kilns and sinks and storage for bulk supplies. Other seniors right now have to transport their own supplies in and out of the building, which can be a deterrent for a lot of older adults. Uh modern centers also have what we call flexible rooms that can be utilized for many purposes, with walls that move and screens that drop down and flooring that is multifunctional as well. Uh we have inadequate clinical space, inadequate storage, inadequate kitchen facilities. Uh as I mentioned, we don't have a health room uh for conducting hearing and blood pressure clinics. We cannot provide diabetic foot care. Our clinics actually take place in our living room area, uh which is right out in the open, uh behind a cloth divider. Our center has one closet to store all of our program supplies, which dramatically limits the types of programming we can manage. Our kitchen is residential in design, severely outdated and has some compliance concerns, and it is too small for the programs that we need to provide. We do lack private conference rooms for sensitive confidential consultations and appointments. Uh we have volunteers that do provide health insurance counseling and tax volunteers that complete over six hundred filings annually. And these are essential services where personal, confidential, and HIPAA-protected information is exchanged. And some of those services take place out in the open as discreetly as we can, or myself or a staff person volunteers up our own office. And for those of you that have been to Town Hall, it's no secret that parking is a challenge. Um and it's even more difficult to find parking near our center. So this inadequate parking leads to a lack of access. The seniors leave when they don't find nearby parking, and they stop coming, which isn't good for the senior or for a community that prioritizes health and inclusion. Some of our participants come to the center looking to make friends or just get out of the house after a spell. Uh and imagine finally making the effort to step outside of your comfort zone only to be turned away. So that, this is why I get emotional, and that stuff really does break my heart. Um as I mentioned, we do have some compliance and access issues. Our doorways and hallways are not wide enough and are very confining, creating a fall hazard when people congregate. Our center is small, um and our patrons do like to chat and and to congregate with their friends. And the only place for them to do that is in the hallway right in front of reception. Uh modern centers have large receiving areas and several sitting areas with couches and coffee tables, creating a warm and inclusive environment where the seniors can gather without the risk of accidental pushing or tripping. Our corridor is barely wide enough for two people to pass each other. Our bathrooms are original twenty-two years ago. Um we do need a family caregiver companion restroom. Uh currently, if somebody needs assistance uh in using the restroom facilities, we assign a staff person to go in and sweep the restroom to make sure there's nobody in there and then to guard the doors that nobody else enters. Um we have accessibility issues in the kitchen. Um there is a lack of visibility from the street to find the center, and there's no protection from inclement weather currently. So, you know, I see seniors that are using our transportation services to come into programs, and they are exposed to the inclement weather, uh and it's even harder if they are unsteady or slow on their feet to get from the parking lot into the facility. Um and much like Chief Jones discussed, we also have inadequate space for staff. Our staff do share office space. We operate with a high volume of noise in the senior center and work with a population that has higher rates of hearing loss. So oftentimes, we are loudly speaking, and many conversations and phone calls are confidential in nature and can be heard by everybody hanging out in the reception area or walking through the administration area to go over to Town Hall. So our existing footprint does not give us any room to spread out and really protect that confidentiality in the way that we want to. We don't have conference rooms to use uh or room for volunteers to work. And as Dawn mentioned, over a hundred and thirty volunteers that we try to find space for in the center can be very challenging, and I think we're limiting the roles that we can offer because we don't have space for them to work out of. Uh some of the volunteers do work in my office, which limits the scope of the work that I can do when they are present. Um the next slide you'll see is a picture of our kitchen. As I mentioned, it is residential in style. It is twenty-two years old, um original to when we moved in. We share this space with South Shore Elder Services or Meals on Wheels, which limits our use of the space for lunch and other functions. And if you know, seniors like to gather and eat, so it is um essential for us to have a kitchen that can make that possible. We do not have dry storage for food, so we can't store emergency meals for seniors in need. We cannot keep donations of food for restaurants or other distributors um and get those out into the community like every other center does. Um even through this pandemic, I have had to turn down monthly deliveries of forty boxes of frozen meals um because we don't have a place to store them in order to distribute them in the right way. So we use this space right now with seven to eight volunteers and staff when we try to prepare and serve meals. And you can see the wash sink is not ADA compliant, and it's hard for a wheelchair person and a walker to um to move around that space. This picture is our multi-purpose, sort of multifunctional, all-in-one room. Um you look at it and think it might only need some cosmetic updates, but it's our main program room. So this is the space that can divide into two rooms, but we hold art classes, lunch and fitness in here. Um we have to be careful about competing sounds, that the partition we have is not um soundproof in any way. Um so you could take a yoga class on the same floor that we just served lunch, uh and that is the reality of what we work with. We don't have storage, so we have to keep the tables and chairs stacked around the room, which further decreases the usable floor space that we do have. And because this is the most suitable room for a class with more than five people in attendance, we're very limited to the number of programs that we can run at once. Um you'll see over the next two slides the comparison of the numbers of programs that can be offered in a modern senior center versus what we are able to offer in our current Hingham Senior Center facility. So in a in a modern center, we could run a hundred, a hundred and fifteen individual programs each month that do repeat. Um some would be, you know, weekly, monthly. But classes like pound and zumba, meditation, digital photography, drones, um widow support groups and other support groups. We could offer those if we had the space. We should be offering those. Um but can we is the question. And looking at the final slide of what we offer in Hingham, we max out at thirty programs each month. Our seniors do want to learn, they do want to exercise, they do want to socialize, but I can't bring in new programs and still maintain all the long-running clubs and classes that we've had. So many seniors can't get what they want from us, and they end up going to other towns, Marshfield, Duxbury. Um we have three different age groups of seniors that we work with. So we have our fifty-nine to seventy-year-olds that are newly younger, our seniors that are seventy to eighty-five years old, um and then our older elders. So we have three different groups of very different interests, and we need to provide programs to engage that forty-year range um in age difference. And I know this is on the forefront of some some people's minds, but our Phyllis Chapman, um who just turned a hundred and three years old this week. Um happy birthday to Phyllis. She was still coming in and active at the senior center. Um she has always had quite the show of support to celebrate. Uh and she's she's one of the reasons that we do what we do, to keep people aging in the community longer. Um I'm not going to slight at all what we do. We do the best we can with what we have, but our seniors, they deserve more. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Um you began your presentation noting um that the department is celebrating uh its fiftieth anniversary this year, and I told you this before, that we owe you and the seniors a birthday party to celebrate that fiftieth year. And we also owe seniors uh an improved and expanded senior center. The expansion will be made possible once we're able to move the police headquarters from its current location at Town Hall to three thirty-five Lincoln Street. So I want to shift now our focus from the benefits of the proposed land acquisition to the specifics of that acquisition. You can see that the property consists of about three point one acres. Uh it's on the northerly side of Route Three A, close to the Hingham Shipyard uh and the MBTA computer commuter boat parking lot, and it's next to the Fresh Market. Go to the next slide, please. Um as many of you know, the town does not make snap decisions like this when it comes to capital expenditures. We move only after careful deliberation, and we move forward in stages, giving the selectmen, town officials, and town residents the opportunity carefully to evaluate each step. So at our last annual town meeting, which was in June twenty twenty, uh the town adopted four articles. One, authorizing the selectmen to conduct a feasibility study to see if three thirty-five Lincoln Street was a feasible location for combined public safety facility. Second, establishing a public safety building committee to conduct that feasibility study. Third, we authorized, the town authorized the selectmen to begin designing a possible expansion of the senior center. And finally, we, uh the town established a senior center building committee. Um next slide. So we established the building committee. Bob Garrity is the Chair, and you can see here who the members are, Paul Healy, Vice Chair, uh Joe Kelly, Tally Lauder, Bruce Macaloney, Donna Smallwood, Andrew Touche. I mean, they have put in incredible work. Uh both the police and fire chiefs have been ex officio, are ex officio members. They've also been going to these meetings and making sure that the evaluation is done thoroughly and that we can get the proper result. The committee did site visits at the police station, the fire station, uh the proposed location of three thirty-five Lincoln Street. They visited uh public safety facilities in neighboring towns, and they've worked closely with architects that were retained Castle Booze Associates to conduct the feasibility study. We have the next slide, please. So I'm going to introduce uh the Chair, Bob Garrity, to discuss how the committee operated. I just want to preface this to let folks know that we were really fortunate to get Bob. He is the former chair of the Hingham School Building Committee for the Hingham High School and South Elementary School. And he's also the former chair of the Hingham Building Committee for the new DPW facilities and the new athletic fields, that's Carlson Field. So he really has brought to us a wealth of experience. And Bob, if you could give us a summary of the committee's activities to date, which I know culminated in a unanimous conclusion that three thirty-five Lincoln Street is a feasible location. Bob?
Thank you, Joe. Our building committee was charged by the last town meeting to independently determine if the three thirty-five Lincoln Street parcel was a feasible location for the combined police and fire station facility that we are all potentially going to build in the future at three thirty-five Lincoln Street. Now, in order to carry out that charge, we reviewed a lot of information about the parcel itself and we also reviewed a lot of information that was concurrently being performed and provided to us by Night Baggy and Anderson, I'm sorry, Night Castle Booze Associates, who are the specialty design firm that focuses on police and fire station facilities. We reviewed the information that KVA was developing as it was being developed and we got to participate in a lot of discussions with them. We reviewed information regarding the utility easements that were on the site to make sure they wouldn't make building at the site difficult. We reviewed information regarding the soil conditions at the site to make sure that there was, they wouldn't pose some unusual construction problem if we were to in the future build on that site. And we reviewed different investigations that were conducted on the soil at the site to try to ensure that you wouldn't encounter any kind of hazardous material problems or contamination problems that could potentially be encountered during the construction process that could have impacted the question of whether the site was feasible. And we also reviewed information about how well the site would accommodate the requirements of the fire and police facilities, but particularly the fire station, because there will have to be, there were a lot of access issues where the fire department has to access onto Route Three A. And we, we had to look into the question of whether emergency vehicles could get onto and out of the site in a safe manner without interfering with the existing traffic. We talked with traffic experts who showed us and convinced us that there would be no problem with access and they told us technically exactly how the access would be conducted. We reviewed all the information about the approximate size of a new public safety facility that Castle Booze was putting together. And we looked at all the parking requirements that would be required on the site to make it work properly. And, you know, quite frankly, we had to decide whether the proposed building would be able to fit comfortably and with all necessary zoning requirements and parking requirements on the site. Now, based on all the above information that we looked at, the committee unanimously voted that the site, that the parcel in question, namely three thirty-five Lincoln Street, was a feasible location for a new public safety facility that would meet the current and future needs of the Hingham Police Station, Police Department and the Hingham Fire Department.
Next slide. Thank you. Thank you, Bob. That was, that was a great summary of the committee's work. And I know that the committee has more work ahead of us. So thank you for your devotion to the town. So now I want to talk about price and timing. The purchase price is five point four seven five million. That was established pursuant to a purchase and sale agreement that the town entered into with the seller. We had the property appraised in February twenty twenty and you can see that the purchase price is above the appraised value. And so the question that the selectmen looked at, that I looked at is, why would we be willing to pay more than the appraised price? And I, and the answer is, was pretty straightforward. The current market demand for industrial property, especially in Hingham, has been rising in twenty twenty, even as demand for other properties has been declining. The town's permitting departments have received calls in two thousand nineteen and into two hundred and twenty twenty from potential buyers seeking information about the allowed uses for this particular property. And during the town's negotiations, another party bid against the town specifically for three thirty-five Lincoln. So the board of selectmen reviewed the transaction, reviewed the pricing and determined that the pricing was fair for the town. And in terms of the cost to the town, given the debt service costs that we could reasonably expect, the debt service for the first two years, if we move forward with acquiring the property, would be about twenty-seven thousand dollars a year. And as we shifted into longer-term financing over the remaining years, the increase would be, the price would be about five hundred thousand dollars a year in terms of cost to the, to the town. Next slide, please. So purchasing, purchasing the property now preserves for the town the ability to move forward with a public safety facility that achieves numerous benefits. And you can see the benefits listed here. A modern and safe fire and police facility, cost savings and operational efficiencies, accommodating both male and female firefighters and officers, and appropriately sized and configured spaces to accommodate public safety work and public business. It allows for expansion of the senior centers, school administration and other town hall departments to utilize the existing police department space, maintain the senior center at town hall. A number of the seniors who were surveyed, it's highly desirable to keep this location at town hall. Allows for expanded services in all three departments to meet projected growth and relieve parking issues at town hall. These are parking issues. Let's go back. You jumped too soon on the slide. These are parking issues faced by employees, neighbors and the public. So the joint public safety facility would be, I just want to note, it would be the first Hingham Fire Station in its, in this location to be able to respond to any emergency disaster caused by the Waymouth compressor station. And that's one of the benefits that you don't see here listed on the slide. And it is, it's something that's obviously recent, given what's going on with the compressor station. So it's something that is clearly a benefit here. Can we move to the next slide? So the question is, why now? And the timing is in part dictated by the purchase and sale agreement. We will lose the opportunity to purchase this property at this price if we do not issue an approval to the seller by November thirtieth, which would means that we need positive action at the November twenty-first town meeting. After extensive search over several years, the town has not been able to locate any other viable or alternative location for North Fire. There's been an active search since two thousand fifteen. And we do not want to lose this opportunity. And also, given the current borrowing environment, we are now in a very favorable borrowing environment. Interest rates are at an all-time low. And so our ability to make this capital acquisition at low rates is again, an opportunity that we should not be missed, not be missing. Next slide. So I'm going to turn specifically to what is on the agenda for town meeting November twenty first. As our chair noted, there is a single article and I will read that article so it's clear. Will a town vote, one, to authorize but not require the board of selectmen to acquire by purchase the property located at three thirty-five Lincoln Street, Hingham, Massachusetts, in accordance with the terms and conditions of a purchase and sale agreement between the town and two ninety-one Mystic LLC? And two, to authorize but not require the board of selectmen to grant and accept all easements necessary to develop said property? And three, to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds a sum of money to be used by the board of selectmen to acquire said property and to take all actions necessary to complete said purchase or act on anything relating thereto. The advisory committee and the board of selectmen have voted unanimously in support of this article. Now, I know there's going to be an opportunity for questions, but I want to actually begin with taking questions that we've received from members of the public in response to information about this proposal. And I want to call on our town, our town administrator, Tom Mayo, to respond to the questions and then we'll have the opportunity for other members of the public to ask questions. So Michelle, if you can go to the first question, which is, will the public safety facility project affect the foster school timeline? And before Tom gives the answer, which is a resounding no, I just want to note that the North Fire Station is the station responsible for responding to, responding to fire and health emergencies at foster school. So this is a project that directly benefits the foster school environment. So with that, Tom, if you could answer the question.
Sure. Thank you very much, Joe. Yes, as you stated, the answer is no. And as you can see on this slide, Foster School and the Public Safety Facility could move forward on parallel tracks. So a little bit of background, Hingham entered into the Massachusetts School Building Authority Program for Foster in twenty nineteen. And that was on our third try after being rejected for the program in two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen, after attempts to, to enter into the program then. This is important because the MSBA will in fact be able to fund this project to the tune of several million dollars. So it's, it's an important program to be a part of. Earlier this year, the board of selectmen and the advisory committee both unanimously supported additional funding for Foster School for the feasibility study and made this presentation to the annual town meeting in June, which subsequently approved these funds. This town, the town is on target to hopefully be authorized to move into the feasibility study stage for Foster School in December of twenty twenty, having met all of their prior deadlines in May and June and September. Efforts to date have included, an educational profile has been completed by the school department. Town meeting has set appropriations as needed. The formation and subsequent appointment of the school building committee have occurred. The school department has worked to create a maintenance plan, an enrollment study and a transportation study. And these are all things that need to, to occur along the way and are occurring. And the municipal and school leaders will in fact continue to work together and participate in regular required MSBA sessions to meet the deadlines and keep the project moving forward.
Next slide. Thank you. So one of the questions that I've received and I select, I suspect other selectmen have received is, what is the breakdown of the town's debt service? And to what extent has our debt service really been responsive to the needs of the schools?
Sure. So as you can see from this slide, approximately seventy-four percent of the town's debt service in FY twenty, which is the last fiscal year that's been completed, in fact, was applied to school facilities, to support school facilities. In that roughly four million dollar number is debt service for the high school, the school, South Elementary School projects, Plymouth River and Foster Elementary improvements, the new East Elementary School, the new middle school and the high school athletic fields. And all appropriately so as determined by the town along the way. So, so those are, those are all some good programs and projects that are being funded currently. And like I said, to the tune of seventy-four percent of the FY twenty debt service.
Thank you, Tom. Michelle? Next question. Why focus on this project, namely acquisition for a public safety, public safety facility? Why focus on this project instead of addressing the lack of full-time, in-person learning for our children? And I guess, Tom, before you respond, my view, that's a false comparison. It's, it's a false trade-off. There's not a trade-off between one versus the other. We need to address both. So if you could proceed, Tom?
Sure. Thank you, Joe. Yeah, the problem is a lack of space. Due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, the lack of space to open safely, given the Department of Public Health's recommendations to keep people a minimum of six feet apart and staff shortages due to a lack of qualified applicants, the superintendent is hindered in his ability to bring all students back to full-time, in-person learning. Staff shortages are affecting all school districts in the state right now. Hingham's staffing vacancies have been funded and have been posted, though vacancies remain. The school administration has identified the possibility of leasing Saint Jerome School Facility in Waymouth to augment Hingham's school infrastructure, thereby providing more space for in-person learning. This solution will be partially funded by the CARES Act. And I am working with Dr. Austin to do whatever we can to make this solution a reality, including providing additional funds as necessary. The school superintendent is part of the COVID nineteen command group, along with myself, the assistant town administrator, the fire chief and police chief, the executive health officer and the deputy chiefs to evaluate the COVID nineteen trends and safety protocols to assist the superintendent in all of his decision-making. Dr. Austin works with the town's executive health officer on a daily basis to monitor state guidelines and protocols, COVID nineteen spread in the community and in the schools, and to conduct contact tracing. Everyone's goal is to return, return to in-person learning as quickly and safely as possible.
Thank you. Next question. Will the land purchase affect the school budget funding?
No, it will not. The school budget, like it is every year, will be determined through the annual budgeting process, which begins each fall and occurs in public meetings of the school committee, the board of selectmen and the advisory committee. The school department's needs are vetted and funded during this process and the school budget is approved in aggregate. Actual school spending is necessarily determined by the school administration. The urgency before the town related to three thirty-five Lincoln is the November thirtieth, two thousand twenty deadline in the purchase and sale agreement. If town meeting does not approve the purchase in the next, this purchase in the next twenty-three days, we will lose the property.
And that is not something that I think this town can afford. So I know there will be other questions and I'm going to turn it back to our chair in a second. But in conclusion, I want to urge everyone here to recognize that this opportunity goes away after November thirtieth, which means really it goes away after the November twenty-first town meeting if we don't move forward. And we, there really are no viable alternatives for North Fire Station. The advisory committee and the board of selectmen have voted unanimously, unanimously in support of the property acquisition. This is a unique, unique property that saw multiple town needs. We have the opportunity for a modern and safe facility for our public safety professionals. And this gives us the opportunity to expand the senior center. There will be minimal costs for the town in the first two years. Foster School is on its own path with the MSBA that is not affected by this purchase. And again, as Tom explained, return to, in-person learning will not be affected by this purchase either. With that, I would return the meeting to our chair.
Joe, thank you. And to each and every of the presenters who have given us all a lot of really helpful information. Bill Ramsey, I don't know if you wanted to add anything to what we've already been heard before opening it up to the public.
I could. A couple of comments, Mary. Thank you. Joe, thanks for the presentation. Again, my thanks to the building committee for all their work on this project. I want to just offer a couple of comments. You know, last Friday, I had the opportunity to go over to both the North Station, North Hingham Fire Station and the Police Station. And I want to emphasize to everybody that the pictures that Chief Murphy put up on the screen are sadly a fair and accurate representation of the state of that building. It's dangerous from an ability of the fire apparatus to, to exit that building safely, given how small of an area it is. The ability to decontaminate their protective gear is, is almost non-existent there, which is a major concern for the safety of our firefighters. The safety of our firefighters and their living area is sad to say the least. Mold in the building, the roof isn't kind of disrepair. And it bothered me a little bit to see that condition being on this board and having a responsibility to our town employees. But I also spent some time at the police station and I was absolutely just shocked that there are small areas of that police station that are used for multiple purposes. I'll give you a good example. The chief brought me to an area, a small little office area that is used for firearms permits. That is used for the domestic violence advocate. It's a safe space. It's used for the animal control officer. It's used for the mental health advocate. And I said to him, I go, four or five different people work out of this little office? He said, yes. And he took me to a different part of the building. And it's, and within the same area, it was, it's the, it's the, it's the area where the officers write their reports. Right next to that spot is where detainees are bailed. It's the evidence room is right there. The, the evidence room is like a locker. It's, you know, someone who's served as a prosecutor a lot, lot of my career. About their ability to do their job as alarm force agency. The evidence room is like a locker. The armory is like, like a closet. So a lot of concerns there. And as Jennifer articulated well, that we have a third benefit to expand our senior center. And I just want my last comment is, I'm probably the only person on this Zoom call who actually went to Foster School. I went to Foster School in the late eighties and my children go there now. And when I go to that school, I see how bad it is. And it concerns me. And I just want to emphasize the point that Mary introduced with and that Joe, Tom and Joe articulated. Moving forward with this project in no way, shape or form prevents us from addressing the capital needs of Foster School and the timeline that Tom put up there. We do have a plan for it. We intend to address it. This is not, if we do this, we can't do that. I think it's the board's desire to do both projects. And moving forward on this project in November is not going to impact the operational budget of the school department in any way. I think it's, I think we need to make sure that we understand that from a financial perspective. I think we also take some time to understand how our town finances works. I think if you really listen to what you've heard today and explore it yourself, I think people will see that there is a pressing need to move forward with this property. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. I would a couple of things. There was a slide in the presentation that said, why should we do this now? And I the town began evaluating and exploring ways to address the space. People may recall that in two thousand eight, Hingham read to allow the town to raise their taxes so that we could build a fourth and needed elementary school that was East School. In two thousand nine, the town of Hingham voted to allow the town to raise its taxes for an operational override to open East School to gain the benefit of that fourth school. And in two thousand eleven, the town of Hingham voted to allow, citizens of Hingham voted to allow us to raise their taxes to replace the Hingham Middle School, all projects that were very much needed. It was interesting in Hingham, but in the nineteen fifties, there was an awful lot of building that went on. A lot of the schools and fire stations and, and buildings were built around the same time. And we are, we are now as a town, and we've been anticipating this for a few years, are anticipating a point where many of these assets have, have reached the end of their useful life. And, and as the town has been planning to look and see how we will move forward, this board's approach has been, how do we move forward to address as many of these needs as we can? We have taken prudent financial measures over the past few years that have positioned us well to be able to do multiple projects on parallel paths. And, and that's kind of where we, where we find ourselves, where we find ourselves today. You know, I'd also just say that in the time that I've had the privilege of serving on this board, I think we hear a lot from people that they like really, really good services. They want, they want good capital and they want low taxes. And, you know, I like to say, pick any two. One of the things that we strive for in government, all of, all of the volunteers who serve this town, all of the employees who serve this town, we strive to determine what is the and as we, while, while I do think that there are some challenges that we have, I think we have a lot of capital. Our operating budgets, I think the town has shown that when we work together, and as Joe said, we do our homework and, and we deliberate things, we, we go through that deliberative process. We make the decisions that are in the best interests of the town. So invite members of the public who wish to ask a question, make a comment, I'm going to ask you to use the raise hand function. I would ask you to please state your name and state your address. And for purposes of time, if, if there are people who have multiple questions, ask that me maybe take one question at a time so that we can get to as many questions as possible. And I did receive a text that I think my internet connection has been a little spotty. So Joe, if, if for some reason my internet connection breaks up during the Q and A, if, if you could step in as needed. I, I don't want to, I don't, I don't want my connection to slow us down. So with that, I would invite members of the public. If anyone has a question or wishes to make a comment, we welcome to hearing from you. Yes, I recognize Mr. Dan Walsh.
Thank you. Hey, thank you to all of you for presenting today. I'm sure you'd rather be outside as well. And as a resident of the town, I appreciate all of the hours, all of you put into this.
Excuse me, Dan?
Yes.
If you don't mind, just beginning with your residence address, we have it for the
Apologies, yes.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Dan Walsh, Ten Rice Road. Thank you, Joe. And very quickly, I'd like to salute Bob Garrity, especially an accomplishment was left off his resume, which is his role in acquiring the South Shore Country Club. He's made tremendous contribution. Very quickly, I'm wondering if what other locations were considered and maybe why they were ruled out.
Tom, is that, is that a question that you can answer? What other locations, why they were ruled out?
Sure, I can take a stab at it. Chief Murphy can, can augment and backfill what I forget to say, as he was here for, for all of it. So Dan, as you probably know, the, the older building committee back in fourteen or so, fifteen had pursued a property over towards Bear Cove Park. And that property was deemed to be insufficient and inappropriate for a number of reasons, including access, the rail, the rail line. There were some potential site problems and with regards to soil, soils, et cetera. So that property was deemed in, that it wouldn't work by the building committee. And then in the subsequent years, the Board of Selectmen at the time, Karen Johnson was on the board. And she and I were closely with, with then Chief Olson and subsequently Chief Murphy on identifying the, all of the needs of the fire department, the modern needs, that, you know, the, the, the size of the, of the property, the access to, to, to a main road. It's got to be at a traffic light, preferably when you're on a main road, so you can stop traffic and get out safely. Call volumes, response times, et cetera. And in doing that analysis, it drove us right up to the three A corridor. And, and as we looked at all the properties up and down the three A corridor, there are very, very few properties that actually meet those criteria. Not the least of which is also, you know, vacant and unused or unused or available property. So, you know, the, the, the consensus drove us very quickly to three thirty-five Lincoln Street. There had been some conversations about the selectman's property on Beale Street, but that again, was outside of the appropriate area for the response purposes. And, and perhaps a couple of others, you know, somebody had mentioned some, perhaps some use early on of Lynch Field area and, you know, there's, there's restrictions there with the National Park Service. And of course, it's, it's full use by the community as a park. So there were properties like that that had been talked about. But because of the restrictions and the needs of the fire service, we, we quickly realized that three thirty-five Lincoln was very much a unique opportunity.
Chief Murphy, I don't know if you have anything to add to respond to Mr. Walsh's question?
And I think Tom did a great job on it. The only other property that was identified but was quickly ruled out was we did look at some property in the area on Fattler Street as well. But that did not meet the, you know, the requirements and the need, and that's in a residential area. So that was ruled out as well. So thank you.
Other questions? Yeah, and I would just add to Mr. Walsh, you know, you know, as a town, we're always looking first, you know, before we have to go out and buy some land, we're always looking to say, is there any land that we have available that we can use for a different purpose? Using the ads that the town has is our choice. And in this case, the available parcels were not suitable in terms of the, you know, operational needs of the department, particularly with, to response times. I do not see any other, any other hands. So I think just, just as a way to, to close up, I will remind people that town meeting is taking place two weeks from today. That's Saturday, November twenty-first. High school social distancing and all of the safety protocols that were put in place for town meeting in June will be followed. Although we're not going to have the cooling station, we're just kind of going out on a limb and thinking that maybe that won't be necessary. But again, we, we understand that we are still in the midst of pandemic and take that seriously. And we are committed to making sure that all of, all of the citizens who come forward are able to participate in the meeting in a will know that we are holding a second information meeting and that's taking place this Thursday, November twelfth PM. That will be a post. And, you know, for those on the call, if you have friends, neighbors who are interested in this project, who have questions, we would encourage you to let them know about this. We are also getting the word out. And, you know, I, I think that the last thing that I would just say before closing up, I think that Hingham is such a fortunate, we are so fortunate in this community that we have so many dedicated employees and volunteers who just put in countless hours, not only in terms of, of delivering services to this town, but also in terms of looking ahead and, and in helping shape this community to come. And, and you know, while we've been talking a lot about buildings during this meeting, I, I think it's just worth calling out that, again, we are so fortunate to have such dedicated employees. An important part of retaining high caliber people across the town is making sure that the facilities in which these dedicated folks work allow them to do their jobs and, and allow them to do that safely. And, and that's a lot of what, that's, that's a lot about what this special town meeting is about. So before I adjourn the Board of Selectmen, Bob, would you like to adjourn the building committee? I think you're muted.
If our building committee members are still available, I suspect they are, but I would make a motion to, or I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the building committee's portion of this meeting. Do I have a second?
Second tally.
Okay, second tally. I'll, I'll read off and give me a yes or no. Paul Healy?
Aye.
Joe Kelly?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Bruce McEloney? Don't think he's here. Donna Smallwood?
Aye.
And Andy Toushey?
Aye.
And myself, I, so the ayes have it, we consider ourselves adjourned.
Thank you. And thank you again to the members of the Public Safety Building Committee for your great work. And before adjourning the Board of Selectmen, I just want to thank Tom, Michelle and Joe. You've put an enormous amount of work, not only into the, the warrant article, the special town meeting, today's information session, and, and we just all really appreciate it and thank you for a very informative presentation. With that, I would take a motion to adjourn the Board of Selectmen.
So moved.
All those in favor, by roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye.